Good afternoon, everyone. It's 4:30 and today is October 27, 2020. And at this time, I'd like to call to order the work session of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board. Before we move further, I'd like to call roll of board members for the record. And I know at some point Ms. Munoz will be joining us. So please let me know when she does. In the meantime, I'll start again alphabetically. Mr. Hendrix?
I'm here.
Ms. McGrath?
I'm sorry, let me unmute her.
Okay.
There.
Present.
Thank you.
Present.
Dr. Norene?
Present.
Mr. Sarr?
I'm here.
Dr. Thor?
I'm here.
Ms. Nguyen?
Here.
And with my presence, the board is in full quorum, 7-0. Today, we're going to hear from the faculty administration collaboration team. And at this time, Dr. Gonzalez, would you please introduce our presenters?
Yes, President Sullivan, members of the board, and guests that are with us this evening or this late afternoon, we thank you for the opportunity to come before you to present this collaborative effort to bring forth this document that has been requested by the governing board. We also want to express, again, our appreciation for the extension in time that we were given at the beginning of the summer, and we've taken full advantage of that opportunity to bring this document to a place where it is ready for review by all employees that are impacted by this document, and of course, by our governing board that will ultimately be afforded an opportunity to vote on this. So I would like to mention that throughout this process, our faculty and administration have had opportunities to review various versions of this as these items were completed. And I would say almost two weeks, within a week and a half to two weeks ago, the body of faculty in the Maricopa District received this draft that's in your hands for their review. I believe that the last time that it was looped out to faculty and administration may have been in late August, early September. And this document that is before you this evening is a representation of all of the feedback that was provided, and then, of course, taking that feedback and putting it into this document. I would also like to remind everyone that is listening on this call and participating in this meeting that this is merely a work session on this, which affords us an opportunity to have open air dialogue with one another as a governing board body and as an employee group, where you afford an opportunity to ask questions, provide some suggestions. And we fully understand that there will be no vote on this today. We also invite and encourage our governing board that if they, if you as a body wish to have additional work sessions to continue to discuss this document before you bring it to a place for vote, that we are more than willing and would appreciate additional opportunities to engage in this form of conversation. We fully understand that you've also just received this document late last week. It's nearly 200 pages. It's quite a bit to consume. It's written policy form, which is not always the friendliest language to read something in. It's not like a, doesn't read like a novel. So we understand that and we just appreciate your patience. But the fact team wanted to make sure that they met their final deadline here, and that's it. So I'd like to personally thank the fact team for their many hours of time and effort and collaboration on this. And I'd like to thank the faculty and administration for their time spending reviewing this and providing feedback into this process. So with no further ado, I will turn it over to the fact team. I believe that, I believe Dr. Peterson will help facilitate some of this, and I believe Eddie Jenna is the other member who will help facilitate this. If I'm wrong on that, I apologize, but I'm sure that the fact team, the entire fact team is present with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor. This is Dr. Greg Peterson, President Sullivan, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of CEC, and guests. We are on behalf of the fact, we are so excited to be here tonight, to have arrived here and be able to hand over this document for your review. This evening, actually, all of our fact team members are present on the call in support to answer any questions you have as we go through tonight. But tonight, I would notice our fact members here, again, as the Chancellor said, we're just so excited to be able to be here and be able to present this to you. It's been a journey, and along the journey, here are existing fact members, but we also want to acknowledge the work of Dr. Carla Fisher, Stephanie Fuji, and Kate Hoplin, who all helped us along this way as well. If we could move to the next slide, please. So we recognize that as a board, you've just received this document, and as Dr. Gonzalez said, it's a long document. And so our objective this evening is just to give you a reminder of the process and timeline that brings us to this evening, and then to give you an overview of how the articles are formatted so that, so that we can, so you're able to really understand what's there and how to read through and see what changes have been proposed. And then hopefully that will set you up then to delve into the document over this next month. Next slide, please. All right, so we're gonna jump into our overview and timeline. So if we go to the next slide, as you know, in January 2019, the governing board formed fact through resolution. The first version of fact started in February, really taking the 2017, 2018 residential faculty policies document and integrating that with the new, with the adjunct faculty handbook into a new document. So this will be the first time that all of our faculty are in the same document. That work took a pause in June as we restructured, and then started back up in August in version two of fact, where we reworked 19 of the 27 articles, and then looped them out in October, November, and then January, and then presented them to the governing board in October, November, and February for initial review. We were very grateful, as Dr. Gonzalez mentioned, to receive an extension to complete the remaining eight articles. And so during the early year, early years, it feels like years, early months of the pandemic, we worked through those eight articles. And then in September, we looped out the remaining eight articles to our constituent groups and held some information sessions. That brought us to October, beginning of October, where we finalized all 27 articles into the new faculty agreement which you have received. We submitted that to Chancellor for him to submit to you to meet the timeline for first reading and adoption. Originally, our timeline was, we were given to October for the board to adopt in November. However, again, as you move forward with the timeline, we are totally flexible and supportive. We're just excited that we're here and recognizing that this agreement would be adopted for 2021, '22, July 1, so there still is some time. Next slide, please. As, again, as the Chancellor mentioned, the part of the resolution was a requirement to ensure that we have feedback and consultation with our constituent groups. And so we'll quickly just go through the processes that we used. For administration, all of the articles were looped out to the senior councils in four separate loop-out processes, to the district office leadership, and as well as some key, other key administrators at the colleges. And then the feedback was collected and then incorporated into the document. For residential faculty, if we jump to the next slide, the, they're a bigger constituency group, so they used Google documents, shared Google documents to share the drafts out so that faculty would be able to review. And then also attended the faculty executive council meetings to gather additional information, comments, and questions and thoughts. This information was also incorporated into our article work as we moved through the document. Our final constituent group, our adjunct faculty, of course, is the largest group, and they used the same strategy of Google forms in order to be able to loop out to get as much feedback from constituents as well, and then worked through the adjunct faculty association in order to culminate that information and provide it to fact for inclusion in our work. The, as I mentioned, we had four loop-out phases, and so you'll see the 27 articles there. In dark blue is when they were first looped out. So you'll see October 2019 was the first round of loop-out. November was our second round. We did our third round of loop-outs in January, and then completed the looping out of all of the articles in September of this year with the last remaining articles that you see there. So all of the articles have been looped out. You'll notice that the first three rounds did go for an initial sharing with the board, and the remaining eight articles are new that have, will be coming before you for the first time today or now. Next slide, please. So we are, we've gotten through the process, we've gotten the feedback, we've pulled together the document. As Dr. Gonzalez mentioned, it's about 200 pages. And so we wanted to help really think about how to make this as easy as possible for you to digest and work through. We heard your thoughts about the information you wanted to be able to see in the document, so we were really thoughtful about this formatting. Each article, as you'll see, we created this reference article 00 that's in the faculty agreement you've received as a resource. And so you can see that the way that we formatted each article to make it easier for you to see what you're, what is there. The main text of the article is on the left-hand side, so you'll see the title, and then you'll see each of the subsections listed, so 00.1 text formatting, for example. On the right-hand side, we've included a sidebar. The sidebar has comments that explain where the connection is to the original document that we're using, so the 2017, 2018 residential faculty policies, as well as explanations behind the changes to new language or modification to language. Each sidebar, so each article begins by identifying any language from the RFP that is included in that specific article. This will make it easy if you wanted to go back and reference the RFP. And then you'll notice in the sidebar, each subsection is identified, and then where there is language, similar language or the same language in the RFP, that's listed in that sidebar, so you can see. You'll notice here, RFP 00.1 in brackets, there are no changes. This means that that language reflects the exact language that exists in the RFP. You might see an RFP 001 below with, in brackets, deleted. Anything in that italicized text is language that existed in the RFP but was removed from the new faculty agreement, so you'll be able to see those omissions. In the text formatting and the actual language of the text, text in black reflects language that existed in the residential faculty policies. This isn't new language. There might be some minor edits to it, though. So for example, in 2017, '18, the title Vice Chancellor of Human Resources existed. That has been changed to Chief Human Resources Officer. There's been some grammatical errors that have been corrected and some tightening of the language, but no substantive change to that language. Next slide, please. We've highlighted for you any new or modified language in red. So if you see anything in red, you know that that is new, additional, or modified language. This language also includes the adjunct faculty handbook, which was existing language, but we wanted to make sure it was easy for you to reference the residential faculty policies and keep that language separate. So adjunct faculty handbook language is also included in red. You'll notice in the sidebar, 00.1.2, so when there is a change, in brackets, it will say changes, and then we'll give some reasoning behind why that change exists. If there isn't a reference to the RFP, as you can see, the next new language is captured, then we will just capture, again, the reasoning, explanation behind the change across from the new language. And then in Article 1, we include all of our definitions, but in some of the articles, there are definitions that apply specifically to a section, so we have included those definitions in bold that you will find in that sidebar as well. What we'd like to do is actually walk you through the first couple pages of Article 1 to be able to, again, demonstrate this and make sure that you're comfortable and answer any questions about the formatting. So it's, again, as easy as possible for you to dive in and really be able to study this document. However, if you'll go to one more slide. We are, we have set up additional support. As you're working through the document, we have set up an email address. I need to apologize, our goal was to get thefact@maricopa.edu because it seemed nice and easy, and we had a small glitch. So it's currently set up at fact@cgc.edu. We will get that email address out to you through the Chancellor, so you'll have, you'll have it on hand. But you can send any questions you have to us, and the entire fact team will be monitoring that and will respond within two business days. Fact is also available to attend a future work session, to come back and answer any questions after you've had more time to review the document. So we definitely want to support you in any way we can as you work through this document. If we're able to also transition over to the Article 1 PDF to show. Oh, wonderful. So again, just walking through the formatting, as you see here, again, on the left-hand side is the actual language of the article, and then on the right-hand side is the sidebar. So you know the sidebar begins by showing language that existed in RFP. This language comes from RFP 1.2. You'll notice in the article language, under A, a point of status is existing language. That language was in the 2017, 2018 residential faculty policies. There is a note next to it, though, that tells you that it was previously listed under the residential faculty definition, and we've pulled it out separately. Under B, you'll notice we have new language. So board surprisingly wasn't defined, even though it's everywhere in our document, wasn't defined, so we added that in. We thought that made a lot of sense. And you'll see the comment across from that in the sidebar that this was clarification of an existing term. The College Faculty Staffing Advisory Committee, under C, again, is new language. So you'll notice that it is in red, and then there's a comment there that reflects new language, that there's no reference in the previous RFP, and then the rationale behind that new language. If you could scroll down, please. So another example here. There we go. Perfect. That's a great spot. Here you'll notice above D, in this definition, under the college plan, the language in black is language that existed in the previous RFP, though we've added a couple sentences there in red or parts of sentences that's new or modified language. And you'll notice that in the sidebar, again, there are comments that explain those changes. The Common Pages Committee was existing language from the RFP, has not changed. Complainant is new language, and you notice there that that's actually a term that is more, more detailed defined in Article 20. So we've captured it there, but then there's also a comment that reflects that. And then again, under D, the Language for Day Department/Division Chair, was existing language. So hopefully you'll get a sense there of, as you work through this document, you'll see the language, you'll know what is existing language, you'll know where the changes have occurred in red, and then it'll be easy for you to identify the references back to the RFP, where that language came from, where there were no changes, where there were deletions, where changes were made, and the rationale behind those changes, or where new language and the reason behind those new language exists. Hopefully, this is helpful as you prepare to jump into the document. Again, we are, we're prepared to help and assist in any way as we work through this. But I'd love to open up if there's any questions you have regarding the timeline or regarding formatting process at this time.
This is Marie. Thank you, Dr. Peterson, for the presentation, and thank you to the entire fact team for the hard work and dedication that you've given this project over a long period of time. I know there have been a couple transitions of people who have been part of the team, but all of you did a remarkable job, and again, I want to express my appreciation. The other thing before I open it up to questions from the board as we go through, I want to offer my comment on the formatting and the explanation. I did try to delve into all the pages, and I felt that the time you took to put in writing the formatting really helped me as I started to work within the document. And then for your repetition of that orally this evening has really been good, at least from my perspective. So that's where I would start. And with that, I'm going to then now go to board members unless you have another comment before I do that. Being none then, as usual, I'm going to go in alphabetical order, and I will, at this point, call out that Ms. Munoz did join us, so for the record, she's part of our meeting. And with that, I'll start with you, Ms. Nguyen. I'm going in alphabetical order from the other end. Would you rather I go to Hendrix first?
It's fine. I was, it's all good. So I just want to echo, this has been a long journey, and I think that a lot of thought and care has gone into this document. I want to make sure we get it right, and so I also spent considerable amount of time over the weekend, so I, I'm gonna try not to have too many questions, but I do have a few. So should I just ask those questions? Is that what you're asking for us to do right now, Ms. Sullivan?
Yes, I think unless any one of the other board members has concern with that, I'll just go down the list.
Okay.
So go for it.
Thank you. Under the College Faculty Staffing Advisory Committee, who, and it says other appropriate personnel in order to make recommendations. So I just wanted a clarification about who that is, and since it was new language, and it said it reflected existing practice in some colleges but not others, I just wanted to, if someone would not mind explaining what that, what the College Faculty Staffing Advisory Committee is, will it continue? It sounds like it'll continue to exist. How, well, I just wanted some clarification on that. I don't know who's gonna answer.
Yes. President Sullivan, this is what I apologize, I wanted to open up that document again and look at the language specifically. Thank you for your question. Yes, that committee exists at the college level as faculty positions come open, either new faculty lines or through vacancies, through retirements or resignations, as positions come open. I can give you an example at Chandler Gilbert, so when our, in addition to our department/division chairs who participate, other appropriate personnel includes our instructional deans and our vice president of academic affairs in those conversations. So that would be an example of other appropriate personnel who are involved in those conversations. There is some variance between the colleges, but they all work specifically to look at those lines as they come open for faculty.
So, and am I to understand that this is a committee that would determine residential faculty positions? Am I reading that correctly?
So, for example, at Chandler Gilbert, we go through our budgeting process. When we're allocated new lines, then we refer those to the faculty staffing committee to give us recommendations. The recommendation comes back to the president, and you'll notice there in that second paragraph is then the type of data that that committee uses to review in determining which recommendations to make.
Okay. Thank you. And so under the college plan, next paragraph, "The college plan is a document developed by each college residential faculty in collaboration with adjunct," which got added a lot in this document, which is great, "and approved by the college president." Then in the last paragraph, it says, "In no case may the college plan conflict with the provisions of the faculty agreement." But what it doesn't say is if it does conflict, what is the source of resolution for that?
So the, in the case that there is a conflict, then the college plan has to adhere to the faculty agreement. So the faculty agreement supersedes the college plan.
So the faculty is telling the college president how, so the faculty agreement, this agreement is superior to the college president?
So, no, the, so the college plan is the college level, so the faculty agreement is, as a district, is superior to the college plan at the college level.
Okay.
So what the board adopts in the faculty agreement would supersede any conflict that may exist in a college plan.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I'm gonna try to go through this, I did make a lot of notes, I'm gonna try not to go through every page on the document. I just need a clarification on reassign time. This is on page 11, under R. "Residential faculty may be reassigned from teaching duties to fulfill other important roles within the college and district when such reassignment serves a public purpose for the district's benefit and the district's payments." Do we have a lot of faculty on reassign time? Who's ultimately gonna make that decision? Is that a college president decision, or is that a chancellor decision?
So it would be, it depends on the role. At the college level, it's the college president's decision. But if it is a district position, then it may be either the provost or the chancellor who makes that decision.
On page 13, "Works made for higher doctrine." This dealt with copyright law, and we've had an issue with this recent, since I've been on the board, about creating works and, so I just, I would want more clarification from legal on this, that this was done, that we are in accordance with the law. I'm not doubting what you guys put in here, I'm sure that someone has looked at this. But there is, I just want clarification that we don't create a legal situation for the board on the works of our faculty and how it's used inside the college. So that was just more of a note than a question.
And, I apologize, this document has been reviewed by the Office of General Counsel, so this language was reviewed and approved.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. Under the Article 2, "Shared Governance," there were basically a history lesson at the beginning of this. I didn't know that that was necessary to describe shared governance, but I thought that the actual meat of it started at MCCD, "Shared Governance While Recognizing the Non-Delegable Statutor duties." I didn't know that the three paragraphs above that, not to, I don't want to get into the editing of that, it just seemed that it was a little, I don't know that that history lends to the actual document, it's good to know. I just didn't know that it needed to be included as part of this document. That was just a comment. Trying to go through yours.
Ms. Nguyen, I'm wondering if you have a lot more questions, what we could do is go through everyone just to see what the topical questions are for folks, and then either using that website, and I mean, this is if you have a few more to go as opposed to.
Yeah, I think, I think I'm pretty good, I just, I know that there were a lot up front, and I tried to, I think my major, I think I'm almost done. I think I can do the rest. I have other little things I could send on the website.
Okay. Okay.
And so I'll try to, and I, again, this was a big document to get and I'm trying to, I just want to make sure that we give it the proper consideration, given how much time and energy went into it.
Well, absolutely. So when you, we'll go with a couple more questions, then we can put the other questions into the email. And remember, we have an opportunity also after everyone has a chance over a period of time to put their questions or inquiries into that web address, that we will then consider in other work sessions so we could get even greater clarification. So this is a process as well to get to the right decision. So please go ahead with a couple more questions and then I'll move.
Thank you. I think, thank you. I'm just going to, I'll stop with this one and this goes to some other work that we're going to be doing tonight. And this is on page 63. And this is Article 10 Compensation. And it goes 10.1, the compensation philosophy. And I believe this is the philosophy that we're also going to discuss at our board meeting tonight. And I just, I'm going to clarify that these are identical. Is that true, Dr. Peterson?
Yes, correct. And this doesn't reflect the full philosophy, just the high-level components.
Okay. So the philosophy then was created as part of this document and shared with HR. And so the HR philosophy that we're being asked to adopt was done jointly with HR. Is that, would that be a fair statement?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Mrs. Sullivan, I'll reserve to go the way that we talked about. And you can go to Dr. Thor. Thank you.
Sure. We may be able to circle back. Dr. Thor, it's your turn.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. I want to join the others in saying how wonderful it is to see this document and to thank everyone who worked on it to get it to this point. I have read most of the document and fairly carefully. I found the formatting to be extremely helpful. I thought it was very easy to follow. I particularly appreciate the addition of the context statements to the document. And I think it will be helpful going forward for people to know what the group was considering when making the particular policy statement. I, of course, am thrilled to see the incorporation of the adjunct faculty handbook provisions into this full document. And I think this is a very significant accomplishment and change for the Maricopa Community Colleges. I also was thrilled to see the new sections, particularly Article 6 related to tools for innovation and adaptability. And I think that will serve us well, as well as Article 27 that provides the guiding principles that inform FAC decision-making. So I look forward to further conversation with the board about the various provisions. But where I stand today, I think it's a very, very good document that will serve us well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. And then with that, I'm going to move to Mr. Sarr.
I'm not going to repeat what the last two board members have said because I totally agree with thanking those involved. This is a lot of work and a lot of time and not just started two years ago, but actually goes back a lot longer than that. And I want to thank this group, first of all, for something that I've been asking for. Many of you know for way too long and that's the changing the name from RFP to FAC agreement. So if nothing else was said, I'd be real happy with that part of it. Thor, I'm going to go to questions and come through as fast as I can. And I'm like Mrs. Nguyen, I've got a lot of notes. I went through the whole thing this weekend as well. But the one that keeps coming to mind when I read this document and the old one as well is simply what's in it for us and us being the students and the community members of Maricopa County. It seems like it's a one-sided document.
So President Sullivan, Mr. Sarr, the, you know, I think the, or I think the document as we look at, really having looped it out for review, what we're excited about, and I can speak from an administrative perspective, we're excited about really the progress of thinking about the integration of adjunct faculty into our work. We're excited about the clarity around more of a focus on innovation processes that help us establish standards moving forward, improvement in communication and really clarifying how we collaborate more. There have been significant changes in the document that really reflect, as I said, of culture change, of really bringing, coming together more in that consultation with administration, with adjunct faculty, residential faculty, which I think directly benefits our ability to respond as colleges in meeting the needs of our students as well as our community. So I know sometimes in policy, and especially as a faculty agreement is outlined, there is an emphasis on the roles and benefits allotted to faculty. But I can definitely confirm that this document supports the work as administration and our ability to be more responsive and really achieving the student success goals that we've outlined.
And I get that, but it really didn't answer my question. And quite frankly, I've had this question for a long time and it's never been answered, so it's nothing new. But I do think this is an agreement that two parties are going to sign. And I understand how this supports the faculty and I really appreciate the fact that you've got both adjunct and residential faculty as part of one agreement. That's a massive improvement over the old ones. But I've always been concerned that, you know, as a student, what's in it for me? I guess if I'm paying the tuition and taxpayers are paying for the rest of it, I just want to make sure that there's some accountability that all this, that were 200 pages worth of data, has some solid evidence that this is better for those of us as students and taxpayers in the process. And I know throughout this document, there are sections that talk about what administration can and cannot do without faculty approval. And I'll move on to the section, Article 6, on innovation. I appreciate the fact that this addressed it, but it's a veiled article to me because almost everything requires faculty approval above and beyond even the chancellor in some situations. The MOU is one thing, but I look, you know, if I was a faculty member and I had some really good things, I'd like to work with my students and we talk about academic freedom. Well, there's no real academic freedom when you get right down to it because you'd have to get the approval from what I can see in the document of the Faculty Association before you can long-term any innovation or any new techniques of delivering content and so forth. And I've had this discussion for years. But that's part of it, that I'm going to stop now, but I'm disappointed in those aspects. That being said, it's a massive improvement over the two individual documents that we've been dealing with for a long, long, long time. So I'll stop at that.
Moving on then, Dr. Nurene.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to echo what everybody else has said about, about all the work that's gone into this and the time and sweat and energy. And again, the formatting is very, very helpful, so I appreciate that. I do have some, you know, some small questions, some clarification things, but I think those would be best if I just kind of email those and get those back. Those are just more for my own personal clarification. But again, just thank everybody for all they did and all the work and, you know, it's, it's a lift and I appreciate all their help.
Thank you. One clarification I will make to everyone about the questions. When we submit the questions, they will go certainly to be answered, but the answers have to be done in public. So we will then, after we put some framework around the time for which we can submit our questions, we will then schedule another work session after that so those answers can be discussed publicly for the public record as opposed to individual. So just clarification on how that would happen. But anyway, so thank you, Dr. Are you sure you don't want to ask your question then now, Dr. Nurene?
No, no, I'm good.
Okay. Uh huh. Thank you. All right, Mrs. McGrath.
Yes, I was quite taken with the extreme length of this product. And I'm wondering, is there any possibility that we could have a copy of the same product from ASU and from Grand Canyon University? I don't know which of these parts are new, which are unusual, which are normal in a college or university setting, and I have nothing to compare them with. So I would like to have presented to us the, those two documents I mentioned from two schools because I find that this is basically taking over all the decisions of ownership in a normal business. This only occurs if you're running a co-op and I don't think of our schools in our district as co-ops, but, and it might be normal, I don't know. But I'd like to have some documents to compare with.
President Sullivan, Mrs. McGrath, we can, we can work on getting those documents.
Thank you.
Mrs. McGrath, do you have any questions?
No, I just was baffled by the complete elimination of the board from these decisions. And so I'd like to know is this normal?
And Mr. Peterson, or Dr. Peterson, as you get that material and submit that, whatever you submit to Mrs. McGrath would need to be submitted to the rest of us. It certainly, if she does, if the comparison is done, then I don't want to delay the next work session tremendously. So if you can keep me informed of that timeframe so we can move forward with this process, that would be good.
Definitely.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hendrix? Yes, go ahead, Dr. Thor.
This is Linda Thor. It seems to me that in addition to what Mrs. McGrath is requesting, that we should be requesting information from a like institution. So both the, the public universities in Arizona are governed very differently than we are with an appointed board of regents. And similarly, Grand Canyon University is governed very, very differently than we are with a private board of trustees. So it occurs to me that the proper comparison is to another public, multi-college, community college district, such as one of our identified peers.
That's a good suggestion to add to that. Thank you. Dr. Peterson, do you have a response to that?
President Sullivan, most definitely. What we'll do is we'll work on pulling together a variety of examples at comparison and then work with Ms. Macias in order to get that to the governing board.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you very much. And Mrs. McGrath, so there'll be one other document. Do you have any other questions then after that? Mrs. McGrath?
Thank you. Excellent suggestion from Dr. Peterson.
Okay, great. Thank you. So Mr. Hendrix?
I think I understand the document, so I guess I don't have questions per se. As far as comments, I'd agree with Mr. Sarr. The document seems very, very one-sided. In fact, I don't see any input from any side other than power consolidation with the Faculty Association. I almost wonder if there was any input from anywhere else because I don't see it in the document. But as far as questions, I don't have any questions at this time, but I'll certainly have further comments before we get to a vote.
Okay. And if you do need further clarification or comments on that, so we can have a robust discussion at the next work session, if those can be framed in categories we ensure that they, are people available to work session to answer them, that would be good. So Ms. Munoz, do you have any comments or questions?
At this time, I do not just because I haven't had the opportunity to fully read the entire thing. As Ms. also had like mentioned, I did have some, you know, personal family things going on, but I will make it my priority to go ahead and read that to make sure that I am up to speed for the next one.
Perfect. Thank you for that. So I didn't have any particular questions. I think I had everything, again, I would say I'm slogging through this, but I didn't want to be insulting because of the hard work that you've all done. So maybe I need to come up with a better vocabulary to say I'm scrutinizing and reading thoroughly to increase my knowledge of all of this so I could be more erudite in asking my questions. How's that? But anyway, so Dr. Gonzalez and Dr. Peterson, do you have any further framework or comments you want to make to the group generically about this process, what's gone on for the last year and a couple of years or a long time? The integration again of input and investment, if there is, if there is, I think this is another opportunity for you to talk to that, both you, Dr. Peterson, and you, Dr. Gonzalez.
Sure. President Sullivan, members of the board, I'll offer some comment. I mean, clearly what we're working on here is the development of a document that meets the interests of many and obviously our governing board is included in that, in that description. And so I would be really interested in seeing specifically what those comments are and how we can improve this document and how we can include items that meet the interests of each of our governing board members. So I'm looking forward to what that is because we're very interested in creating a document that can get the full support of our governing board moving forward.
Thank you. Dr. Peterson, any comment?
The only comment I wanted to note is, well, first is productive slogging is always appreciated. Secondly, the document does appear to be longer than it actually is. With the formatting, it probably increases it by 30%. So I apologize for additional length of that formatting. And again, we're just here to help however we can. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, I mean, we're actually a little early. The board knows any other comments or questions before I close the work session and talk about, or talk about next steps and close this work session? Just speak up if you do have any comments or questions. Well then, so as soon as we know the address, I know you mentioned it again on the website. I didn't quite get it. If you could send that information out to us. And I think what I'd like to do is, once you do that, is put a week involved in generating responses, I mean, not responses, generating questions and then go from there as soon as you have some, or maybe a week is even too long, but as soon as you have a chance to look over the questions, give me a sense of how much time you need and then we'll schedule another work session from there. If that works for you, does that work for your team, do you believe, Dr. Peterson?
President Sullivan, most definitely.
Okay. Okay. That's okay. Okay. Yes?
Um, this is Mrs. Nguyen. I, I would like to request at least a week. Um, it, I don't, I don't know that we need more than that, but it, but if we could have a week, given the, what, where we are, I would really appreciate it. Since we just got this document, I want to give it the consideration and, and, and try to figure things out so I don't have to ask questions. So, um, I would just like to request that we get at least a week.
Okay, that's fine. Um, so let's do this. Once we get that emailed, uh, or sent out the correct email address so we can make note of it, Dr. Peterson, I'll give folks a week to, to do that. So, um, and I'll send it out in a board email. So with that, uh, I think we're clear. Thank you, Ms. Nguyen, for your comment on that. And, uh, it is 5:20. And with that, I'm going to adjourn the work session. Now, hang on now, everyone, because this will be the same connection for the, uh, board meeting. So if you are going to, at least for the board, we're going to just stay tuned on the station so that we can convene together at 6:30. Okay? And with that, um, I'll see you at 6:30.